Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of the United States, one nation, and in this world of liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you for joining us here for the January 19th, 2023 Phillips Town Planning Board, our first meeting of the new year. It's nice to see a large crowd. We haven't had such a crowd in a while. Would you please call the roll, Cheryl?
Dennis Cagnon.
I'm here.
Peter Lewis.
Peter.
Laura O'Connell.
Here.
Neil Toman.
Here.
Heidi Wendell.
Here.
Neil Zuckerman.
Here. All right, thank you very much. We have a modest agenda tonight, a number of items of worth and examination, a couple of new pieces of business. I welcome everyone to the new year and look forward to a motion to approve the minutes of December 2022. You have a motion, please. Thank you, Laura. Second.
Second.
All right, second. Neil, any edits, corrections, deletions? Hearing then all, favor say aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye. All right, motion passes. Cheryl, two pieces of correspondence, please.
From J7 Architecture and Design, PLLC, extension of approval requested. Dear Mr. Zuckerman and members of the planning board, on behalf of J7 Architecture and Design, PLLC, we request a six-month extension of the site plan approval. We have received approval from the Putnam County Department of Health. While all other conditions of the resolution have been addressed, our client is still working with the architect to finalize their plans, and we do not believe all items will be completed in time to have the site plan signed prior to the expiration date. Thank you, Margaret McManus, Beatty and Watson.
She is here. So, Adam, are you prepared to comment on this at all?
Well, under the code, an additional extension above the first extension can be granted in the discretion of the board.
Is this the second extension or is it the first, Margaret?
I think this is the first.
Yeah, it doesn't say a second extension on this. Does anyone, you think it's the first? Do you know, Adam?
Yeah, the initial site plan was January 20th. July 21st was the first extension. That was granted, so they're here for a second extension.
All right, well, Margaret, not to put you on the spot, but I'm going to put you on the spot. Can you just give us a couple of words about what's going on?
Yes, the client received his approval, and he's a little stalled in getting his building permit. He's just not ready to pull the trigger on that yet. Things have changed. He, you know, he's a little ambiguous about like his house and his floor plans. You know, he was very ambitious about the size of it, so if he doesn't build that house, we'll be back before you, but he's, you know, he's trying to move forward to decide what he wants to do.
So, the last, my last recollection of a multiple extension situation was a couple that had a major medical problem, and they came back many times. I'm forgetting their name, but you'll remember Ron. And there was a medical emergency, and they just, it came back a bunch of times. So, our hope is to not have people come back.
Right, exactly.
Every six months and say, "We're still not sure, we're still not sure."
I understand.
So, could you get us some assurances, maybe, that this is not going to be a multi...
Yes, I did. I spoke to him today, and I told him that, you know, this was the second extension. It's not, you know, like, I think it's, usually I think you do a couple.
The first is automatic, as Adam said.
The first is automatic, yeah. And so, I did explain to him that if he loses his approval, then he has to start all over again. So, he is aware of that, and I will be having conversations with him between now and then, you know, the six-month period, and, you know, either he's going to get a building permit, or he's going to have to come back here with some modifications.
Dennis gets very upset after the second extension, so...
Wow. I don't want to make Dennis upset.
No, you don't. You don't want to let, you wouldn't like to see Dennis when he's angry. Any questions?
Which one is this, Margaret? It's not ringing a bell here.
San Antonio.
Five River. Pardon me? Five River.
Down by Route 9D, down by the Garrison Inn House.
Okay, okay. All right. Uphill septic, right on the river.
He has, he got his, he has his health department approval.
Right, bad driveway. Yep, okay.
Other questions? You got anyone else? Okay, motion for the six-month extension, second, six-month extension. Thank you, Heidi. Any second?
I'll second.
Second, or any discussion, further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Thank you.
All right, Margaret, you got it. Let's, let's please not have a third, if possible. Okay, second correspondence, please.
Mr. Paulhemus sent a letter requesting the return of his escrow money for the garage that he built on Manitow Station Road.
Okay.
And that was approved in December 2021.
Ron, any question about returning the escrow?
No, no concern at all. The site plan's been signed off, so there shouldn't be any more fees.
Adam, any issues?
No issues.
Okay, get a motion to return the escrow, please.
I'll make that motion.
All right, second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing then all, favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions. Okay, Mr. Paulhemus may have his money back. Okay, Hudson Highlands Reserve. As you recall, I took the chair's prerogative, although I think we took a vote on it, maybe it was a voice vote, to delay this conversation until everyone had a chance to read the memo. I think we hadn't had much opportunity. Ron, would you remind us exactly what we're being asked to do with said memo?
Sure. Just to refresh the board on the process. It's, the project itself has gone through an extended EIS process before you for several years. Finding statement was ultimately approved last year, which allowed the applicant to then pursue the other applications that he had pending with the town board. He was looking for rezoning for a portion of the property on the frontage. He also needed town board approval for an alternate road grade for the entrance road that leads in from Route 9 into the project site where the actual lots are serviced. So, that all has been filed. The town board actually approved the rezoning to residential, so that the lot count has now finally been established at 24. The second application concerning the alternate road standards is currently before the town board. They made a referral to this board for your review and comment before they take any action on the request. So, that's where the project sits. And understand that the access road coming in off Route 9 is currently designed at 12% grade. There's various sections of town code that specify the maximum grade permitted on a local road is 10%, and that's what generated the need for the town board action. Chapter 150 of the town code does allow relief to town code standards. It's done by the town board, and that's the reason the applicant has made the application to the town board, to formally get authorization to use the 12% road grade that they have considered and that you have studied throughout the EIS process. To evaluate that, again, during the EIS process, you looked at any potential points of access for the overall property. And Route 9 is the major corridor that we all understand. However, it's got very severe restrictions on steep slopes as you come off Route 9 to get into the developed portions of the property. The other points of access, or most reasonable points of access, would be East Mountain Road North and Horton Road. But both of them have significant environmental constraints and/or geometric constraints that this board and the general public did not support consideration for those as serving as a primary access to the property. And so, the EIS review that went forward always considered Route 9 to be the most appropriate point of access. And the basis for that, notwithstanding the issue of these steep slopes that must be traversed, was that if you get into the Route 9 corridor, you could design the intersection to meet all appropriate DOT standards. And they had also acknowledged that they would provide a left turn lane in to the project for southbound traffic, which would make the safest point of access into the development. So, once you've established that Route 9 would be the most appropriate point of access, it's the layout and geometry of the roadway that represents the most significant issues to be studied. And as I said, throughout the EIS process, Route 9 was always considered the appropriate point of access for the project. So, they considered 12% grade to evaluate their proposed layout. They came up with an alignment, and they also identified various considerations to minimize to the extent the disturbance that would become necessary to traverse slopes that do exceed 20% as you come off Route 9. So, that's been studied at great length. As I said, the memo gets into some greater detail as to the specifics of what you considered. But I think through the EIS process, this board has done their due diligence. That's appropriate to evaluate this concern that allowed the applicant to even go to the town board for this consideration. So, I think the 12% grade appears to be the most reasonable maximum grade that should be permitted for the roadway, and they're willing to accept. The, and an overriding concern is that there's significant town roads that exist today that have grades exceeding 12%. Now, I think of Old Albany Post Road South as you head south of Travis Corners. That's just one example of many that you have in town. 12% road grade essentially means an increase in grade of two feet over 100 feet than the 10% grade that you do permit. So, I see it as modest. As I said, it's been studied at great length for multiple years, and I think it's something that the town, or the planning board can support to the town board.
Remind us, though, Ron, our obligation tonight is to provide feedback to the town board, not to vote or decide on anything, yes?
Right. You're not approving the road grade, you're just responding to the town board referral to you.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. Adam, anything to add?
No. What would be appropriate would be a voice vote.
Adam, I think you're being asked to find a microphone and bring it closer.
Oh, a voice vote with respect to Mr. Gainer's report. This board can approve the report as written. If the board is inclined to make any changes, additions or deletions, the board can do that as well.
Okay, great. All right, let's open up for discussion. Heidi, please.
So, I have two thoughts about it. I don't know if this mic is working, but my voice is loud. So, two things. One, I've already voiced my objection to the fact that this is not a conservation subdivision, in fact, but I just, tonight I won't reiterate those. But I think that the town should make an ask in response to the developer's ask. So, there should be, you know, the developer is asking for something here from the town, and I don't see why the town shouldn't say, "In exchange for this ask, we have an ask," whether it's to request, you know, additional conservation, preservation, or something that would benefit the town in exchange for this developer's ask, I think would be appropriate. And so, that's my thoughts as to my, in other words, my suggestion to the town board, that there should be something that the developer gives back to the town in exchange for this, you know, like courtesy essentially from the town. Secondly, like one of the topics that came up again last night, I don't know how many people who are here today were at the presentation by the Phillips Town Trails Committee to the town board at the workshop last night, but once again, it was a packed room, and the public brought up again the fact that the community has no transportation plan, and that everybody is cognizant of the fact that there is major transportation problems on the road in this area in Phillips Town. And I would just mention that, so this is more traffic coming out on Route 9, and I think maybe in conjunction with this ask by the developer, we should once again revisit the notion that the town, that our town should have a transportation plan and study transportation and traffic and the volume of traffic, the speed of traffic on Route 9 and 9D, et cetera, in the town, townwide, in other words, and safety and bicycle lanes, et cetera, in our town, you know, more comprehensively. And this would be an occasion to do it in conjunction with this ask, that all this traffic will be coming out on Route 9, adding to the traffic that's already on Route 9, adding to the situation we already have with people, you know, which is not necessarily connected with this developer, but people going too fast. There's, you know, safety problems that are recognized by almost everyone who lives here, and I just note that. So, two things, so those are my two thoughts as to this proposal.
Okay, let's finish going through the comments, we'll come back to your two. Other thoughts? Laura, please.
Just one quick question. So, and this is a Ron question. So, regarding the grade, do we care, or like, is there any sort of check-in with school buses? Because I'm assuming that this is a school bus pickup, unless, I mean, you know, I just only know because I live off of Jaycocks. So, the grade's pretty high coming in from Route 9 and coming up, and I know that the bus going up to Jaycocks does have a problem when it makes that turn off of 9 up to that road. Do we, like, I'm not sure that the study addresses that or even thinks about that, or I guess it's just a question.
I hear the question. As I've said numerous times, the project's been before the board for multiple years, and it was very significant distribution of the EAF documents initially, and certainly the EIS documents that were prepared over time. I can't recall specifically, to be honest, whether the school was included in that distribution, but I can tell you that school buses do traverse town roads in excess of 12%.
Okay.
That's happening today.
Okay.
But I can't be sure that they were included in this, in the review of these documents for the EIS.
Just a brief comment, Ron, in defense of the group of volunteers here. I agree, we've been doing this a long time, this project, and I think that's a burden on the applicant. On the other hand, the chance of anyone in this board remembering our discussions of this 12% versus 10% is a tough ask. I mean, I think this board has spent a lot of time on Hudson Highlands Reserve talking about most other issues, whether the number of homes, the configuration, the pond access, the manure, et cetera, et cetera. So, I would say that just in defense of our activities, this took up a paucity of time spent. So, the fact that none of us recall, or at least in depth recall, the discussions about the grade, I'm not actually surprised, because I myself don't recall. We may have, and certainly I'm sure your recollection is correct, that we did discuss it, but I think that the reason why we're, again, almost in a refresh now is because it's been so long. So, you guys, I feel free to raise any topics you want, and I think that's what we have to do. It's our, we've been asked and we're answering it effectively. So, just want to make clear, feel free to ask and raise any topics you feel, even if we may have, you know, in years past covered it. So, Dennis, anything?
I'm good with Ron's memo on the situation, and that's about it.
Sure.
I agree. I mean, I couldn't remember this application from six months ago down the river. With all due respect, I think you have to be careful when we start playing this, well, they're asking for this, or we're going to ask for that. That's sometimes referred to as an exaction, and it's not, it's just not the kind of thing I think we want to get involved in. The absence of a transportation plan, much the same, the absence of a comprehensive transportation plan, I don't think we can hold that against the applicant. That's something, that's the municipality's responsibility, not the applicant. That being said, I think we, I'm happy going with Ron's assessment of the situation.
Okay, I'll make a couple of brief remarks. I agree with my fellow Neil on the notion of the exchange of value. That's up for the town board to decide. I think it's a lot of our purview. I know we have, I can't remember if we wrote a memo to the town board, or we asked some comments directed to the town board about the need to study Route 9. I know that it was, I can't, it's, again, I can't recall. Ron, do you recall, did we actually send a memo? Did Steve or you write a memo to the town board on our behalf?
Yeah, Mr. Gabber wrote the memo.
Okay. So, we did ask for that. I don't know where it stands. Obviously, we have a very talented, important town board member who I'm sure put in an important file that it could have been round at some point when that memo was sent. But we did raise that, and I think it's important, given the number of issues, since you two at the end joined the board, we've had a number of Route 9 major projects. So, I do think that's outside the purview of this issue. I do, I do think the question of bus traffic is important. Whether we covered it or not, I don't know. But I do think a referral, to my opinion, a referral to the fire department to assess that, just like we had them assess bus traffic at, is it Old?
Old Albany.
Old Albany Post Road North, or whatever that segment is that we just went through.
Yeah, that was Kansas.
Correct, correct. So, I would suggest that maybe we take your bus traffic point, wrap it into, we've got a whole other group called the fire department that's actually quite talented at looking at these things, and we ask them, and I think, you know, obviously, Bob can take your comments, Heidi, on the exchange of value, to just go explore that, whether there is something that the town needs. I don't, I don't, that's...
Can I just say, I'm not talking about an exchange of value, but I think when the town is asked to give something up to the developers, we could consider what the developer's offering to the town.
That sounds exactly like an exchange of value.
It's, why is that an exchange of value? The town is being asked for something, for a benefit.
Use whatever terminology you'd like. That sounds like to me like two parties exchanging things. Anyway, I don't, I don't...
I don't think that's a quid pro quo. It's, you know, the project doesn't involve this access. We know that there's problems on Route 9. Why should we not consider it in that, in that context? It's, the town doesn't have to, but that's my suggestion.
I'm happy for us to, as a group, take a vote on the three topics. So, we've got the, whatever you want to call it. You just called it, a Route 9 study, which we've already asked them for, and an assessment of the bus traffic. Can I get on each one of those, whether there's a desire to have that communicated? On the first point, on the, Heidi's first point, whatever we want to call it. You want, that's...
I vote for it.
All right, so, anyone else?
Yeah, I'm not sure what we could ask for or recommend the town board.
That's, that's why I'm, that's why...
Yeah, no, I...
Okay. A Route 9 study, I know we've already sent a memo, and do we want to reiterate that to the board?
We had a meeting with the town board.
Oh, that's right. We came, oh, that's right, we did have a meet, oh, that's, I forgot.
An extensive meeting.
Oh, that's right. I yapped a lot.
Well, I would just say that last night at the meeting...
I can't even remember that.
The, this whole room was packed, and everybody was expressing concern about traffic. So, it's just reflecting the views of the public in this town. That's, that's what I'm expressing. What was expressed last night in a packed room, with standing room only.
Okay, back to the voice vote. Anyone want to put that in a note to the town board about Route 9 study? I think, no, anyone? No? Okay.
They're well aware.
And then the bus traffic topic, would you be inclined to wrap that into a, ask to have the fire department opine about the road? Anyone else?
I think it's a good idea, even reaching out to the school district to see, you know, the maneuvering up there. I'm not even sure if they would wind up going up in that area or picking the kids up at Route 9 corner.
I probably wouldn't want my kids stopping down Route 9, but that's okay. That's a question to be asked. So, Ron, could you adjust your memo to, oh, sorry, Neil, go ahead.
No, I was going to say, I'm sure there's a code provision there of how close the drop-off point has to be to the homes or something. I'm sure there's something in there. I don't have a problem, you want to wrap in, put in, just put in, we have to refer, we're going to refer to the fire department.
We're going to make a recommendation to the town board that they refer to the fire department and the...
Sure. Right, let's make our recommendation that the, the town ask the fire department for some feedback, and while they're at it, see if they can get somebody to look at the bus route, or somebody with bus experience or something to take a look at it.
School district. Ron, you got it?
Got it.
Thank you. And Bob, you can pretend like you heard it, then hear it back.
You got the gist.
You got the gist. That's why he's here. He's here to hear just...
Yeah.
Okay, that's sole business number one. Anything else on that topic? Anyone? No? Okay. Dane's Lumber. Ron?
I think the applicant's representative could probably give you a status report on where it sits.
Okay, wonderful. I don't know. Maybe.
Good evening. Adam Thiberg from Insight Engineering Surveying Landscape Architecture PC. I'm here representing the applicant, Dane's Lumber, on the amended site plan. I'm also joined by the applicant, James Dane, by the architect, Joseph Thompson, and traffic engineer, Starkip of Creighton Manning. So, since we were last here before you, we provided a lot of additional material in addition to just general advancement and cleanup of the site plans. We've provided an amended stormwater report and updated the detail of the stormwater system in the plans. We've provided revised architectural plans and elevations, and a letter from Creighton Manning with regard to traffic generation, which is similar to the letter that you received with the original site plan that was approved in 2021, but having been modified to address the currently proposed mix of uses. Of course, we have the whole team here, so we're happy to respond to any questions that you might have. And of course, we're going to respond to the few outstanding questions that we have from Ron that we received today. But with the breadth of the material that we've provided to this point, we're hoping that at the end of the session tonight, the board will be ready to schedule a public hearing for next month. And again, we're happy to respond to any questions that you might have.
Why don't you just walk us through your plan? Because I don't remember when you were last in front of us. When was that?
That was in November, so we...
I think, I think maybe it wouldn't be the worst thing for my fellow board members and I to hear your pitch again, because I know we recall you from our many, many months with the, whatever the previous version of this was.
The 3622 Route 9.
Yeah, so, maybe we could all use a refresh. Is anyone opposed to that?
No.
Okay, let's, let's do that. So, just pretend like you have to, just give us the pitch.
Very good. So, this, this is an application for a medite site plan, for the site plan that was approved in 2021. You'll recall, it was, at that time, it was called the 3622 Route 9 LLC site plan. You'll notice that the site plan that's here before you looks, if you recall the previous site plan, it looks pretty similar. We had the larger building in the front, a smaller building in the rear, and outdoor storage. In this new application, the proposal is actually to do this over the course of two phases. So, if I can jump to phase one.
Excuse me, can we step down and try to move one step to the left? Thank you.
So, the site plan set is broken out into two phases. The phase one contemplates the construction of the building in the rear, which would be used strictly for storage. For Dane's Lumber is their existing business. This would be a dry building that would be used strictly for the storage of lumber, building materials, and so on, as well as the creation of the outdoor storage area, which, again, you'll notice is similar to the layout and general size and location of the outdoor storage area that was approved in 2021. In phase one, however, the existing building that's on the site now would remain, and the applicant would rent that property as just a single unit residential rental for the time being for phase one. The other part of this that would be included, though, and as part of phase one, is the DOT design-approved driveway entrances. Those would be installed, essentially the same geometry, the same design as what was approved in the 2021 plan, with the only change being that the southerly entrance had been the primary entrance in the previous site plan, and the northerly entrance was a secondary entrance. And in this application, that's just flip-flopped. Otherwise, the geometry, the layout of that, those driveway entrances are the same as what you saw in 2021. Then, when we go to phase two, the residential building is removed. we go to phase two, the residential building is removed. And a new building, again, similar to what you saw with the front building, uh, in, uh, 2021, with the exception of the fact that both of these buildings are significantly smaller than what you saw, uh, in the, the, uh, the 2021 approved plan. Uh, and this building would house a combination of contractor, uh, office and storage, uh, and a retail, uh, a, a, a retail unit, uh, that would act as a, as a Dane's Lumber, uh, retail center. And that's kind of a, a, a quick summary of the two phases of work, but you can see, again, if, if you recall the 2021 plan, at the full build-out, you know, through phase two, uh, we're, we're really quite similar to, to what was approved in 2021.
Okay. Uh, Ron, questions or points you want to raise?
Sure. The, uh, applicants, you know, reasonably described what the two phases are. There's no specific timing involved between the phases. Uh, the commitment is initially to, to construct phase one. Uh, phase two is gonna trail based on their business activity. Uh, in terms of processing the application, the board has, um, previously decided that no site inspection would be necessary since you've just been to the site for the prior application. Uh, you've made all necessary referrals. You performed a coordinated environmental review. Uh, there's been no objections raised relative to that environmental, uh, uh, referrals made. So at this point in time, the board could deem themselves to be, uh, lead agency formally by resolution, uh, but there's no need to take any further action on it. The significant issue that's before you tonight is just whether you are, are now prepared to consider the plans reasonably complete and, uh, suitable to conduct a public hearing on.
Okay. Uh, Adam, anything to add?
Uh, nothing to add.
Okay. Uh, board members' questions for the applicant. Please.
Oh, Heidi, do you have any questions?
Uh, I don't think so, because I think, um, you already said that you're gonna keep the trees, right, on the south side of the, of the site?
Yeah, so, so the disturbance on that side of the property will be, will be essentially the same as, as what was previously proposed.
I think so.
So, so I didn't actually do a comparison of like what's new and what's changed. Um, so I'm...
Right.
Sorry, and I'm unclear. So, for example, when I saw the tree removal, there's a lot more tree removal, if I remember, um, that is on your drawing now from what was before, but that could have just been me. Um, so unclear, because I thought in the, the original application, there was much more trees in the back area separating out this particular project with the residence that's behind there. So, and I'm only seeing kind of like what's being newly planted versus like what's gonna be existing and added in. So that's one question. The second thing is that I understand that the buildings are smaller, but by how much? I mean, I get it in volume and total square footage, but is it shorter? Because if I understand by the elevations, that back building is 123 feet in that back corner. So, the question is, is that similar to what we've seen before? Because I do know that we did have some questions regarding the height of the building and the volume in comparison to the residence behind.
So with regard to, I'll, I'll, I'll try and take it step by step. So, with regard to the overall disturbance, the, the disturbance is, is less over the, the course of the site. Now, where we push and pull in different directions may, may vary. Uh, the, this building does in fact sit a bit further back than did the one in the previous application. Um, with regard to the buildings, I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave, um, I'm gonna defer architectural questions to the architect. But generally, if my memory serves, I believe the, um, the rear building is, is about the same as what was previously proposed, and the front building is fairly significantly smaller. I think that one was several, was a couple thousand, uh, square feet larger. Unfortunately, I don't have the numbers right in front of me, but I can get you those. And I, with our next submission, we can provide a breakdown of, of the difference between the, the different buildings. But, uh, again, the front building is, is definitely, uh, significantly smaller than was the other one. And with regard to height, I, I would defer to the architect.
I don't mean to speak for the applicant, but as I recall it, the back building was 10,000 square feet in the original proposal, and this is now proposed at 7,000 square feet, as I...
That's correct.
...understand. The front building in the prior proposal was 12,500 square feet, and this is a couple thousand square feet smaller than that. Just to give you order of magnitude.
Correct. This one's 10, 10, uh, 10,500. So yeah, a couple thousand square feet, uh, smaller in the front. And thank you, Ron. Yes, a few thousand square feet smaller in the rear building.
I mean, so, in, sure, I get that, but I guess it's all proportional, right, and relevant to the adjacencies of where the location of them are. So I guess my question is, the back building, because it does feel like it's being pushed up further towards the adjacent property, so I just need to, I just want to see the difference in that and the differential in that.
Sure.
The second thing is, is at the front, if I remember correctly, and I'm gonna try to echo Neil, um, is, you know, that's one of the larger buildings that we, that we're looking to build on Route 9. And so the frontage piece of it is, you know, it's like right straight in your face. So the question is, I get it that it's smaller, but proportionally to what you're seeing from a perspective, like what is that difference? Because you're ha, I mean, it's like a, it's a large facade, but...
Right.
Like comparatively to height and to length.
Yeah, I, uh, again, I'll, I'll let the architect speak to, speak to the height. I think we're, we're proportional though to what was previously provided. And I will say, with regard to the size of the buildings, we did provide, under the 2021 plan, we provided a study that looked at a slew of other buildings down Route, Route 9, and it, it was fairly comparable to other existing buildings. So I just wanted to make sure that we touch on that. And I'm, I'm happy to reproduce that figure for you, so you can see how this building compares in the same way. Um, with regard to height, we, we met zoning requirements. Um, and, uh, you know, uh, again, I'll let, I'll let the architect speak to, uh, speak to the elevations. Um, but again, this, in terms of length on the frontage, it's a smaller building. It's not as long. It's sitting at about the same spot in terms of depth on the, on the property as did the previous, uh, project. Um, and again, it's, it's a smaller building. Um, both, both buildings are smaller buildings. So, um, again, happy to provide that figure that, that we provided with the previous, and you know, you'll be able to, uh, to take a look at that. Um, and that hopefully will give you a clear idea of the, the perspective. And what we could really do, actually, I'm just thinking out loud, is we could, we could provide an overlay of the previous building, this building, and the exist, and, and the existing buildings that we compared it to. Sure.
Yeah, that'll just be very helpful.
Yep, no problem.
I actually would, I would augment that comment around a full comparison of the previous project and this one, e.g., vehicle traffic. Cause you're calling this an amended site plan. So I'd be very helpful for this board to see a comparison of all the major components. Amount of disturbance, amount of square footage being created, heights, vehicle traffic, et cetera. I think that would be, if you're, you were obviously the same person, I'm sure you've got all the files right in your computer. Probably wouldn't be so hard. So...
I'm, I'm happy to provide any, you know, all of those comparisons with regard to disturbance, building size.
You and Ron can work out what the line items are.
So on, exactly. I ju, I just do want to point out, we, we have provided, and, and again, we have the traffic engineer here with us today, we have provided a comparison with the mix of uses, uh, based on the ITE standards. And again, Stark can speak, uh, much more clearly to this than I can, but we are showing a reduction in the anticipated traffic, uh, for this mix of uses, uh, as what, what was provided in his same memo.
Let's get into that then in a sec.
Sure.
Okay. Did you want to say something, sir?
Good evening, board. Joseph Thompson, architect. So unfortunately, I can't comment on the prior proposal. We'll have to get that comparison together. Our, our involvement's been relatively recent for this new proposal. I could comment on general aspirations for the architecture. It's a very simple building, um, very cost-effective in that. Both structures are proposed to be prefabricated steel. Back's very utilitarian. It's an open-air structure for lumber storage and drying. It's, it's set pretty far back into the site. It's not a very large or tall building. At the eve, it's only 20 feet, and that roof slope is pretty low, so I don't think it's gonna be perceived as a, a dominant roof form. Especially with the darker gray colors, it's intended to sort of blend into the landscape and not make a loud statement. Um, that being said, we'll still get a comparison on the prior structure. The, the house itself, we can also get you a height on the existing home. Typical residential structures usually are in the range, you know, for two-story, approximately 25 feet. This building, to the peak of the ridge, is 28. So I, I think it's going to be comparable, but we can get you actual numbers. And on the front building for phase two in the future, again, intended to be a, a simple form, almost agrarian reference, where there's small puncture window openings, a long gable to sort of resemble a modernized barn. It's not meant to make a loud statement or be, you know, too aggressive. It's how it fronts Route 9. Uh, the gray tones are somewhat muted. Um, but are we doing a monument sign on this property in the future?
Yes.
So I think that, you know, that would be where Dane's would market itself, should it use that building for its future showroom. Um, you know, not so much with any large signage on the building. We did provide two reverse gable forms, again, traditional-type forms, very simple, just to demarcate two potential entrances in case this is a two-tenant building. Um, could be possible that, you know, years down the line when it's constructed, it may be, it may be only Dane's. It may be a single entrance, and we'd have to come back to the board for revised architectural approval. But again, supposed to be a very simple, somewhat muted, understated building, um, not make a large visual impact to Route 9.
Thank you. Other board member questions? No? No? All right, I, I have, I have four. So first of all, uh, at least in my experience, Ron, please clarify, the phasing, while interesting, is irrelevant to what we're approving. We're approving the full project in this, correct?
That's absolutely correct. That's right.
Okay. So I find the conversation about phasing to be unhelpful to us, because we are not, well, that's great for community, and we've had this with other applicants. It is irrelevant to what this board decides. So you, I just, I would, I would urge you not to tell us more, much, that much more about it, only because I think it confuses the board about what we're approving. We're approving the full project, whether you do phase two in a week or in 100 years.
Sure.
So just to be clear on that. Second, can we clarify, are you Stark?
Yes.
Okay. Can you just talk about, maybe you, you don't have a sense. I don't know what the types of vehicles that we approved last time versus now are, and I, and it's, it's all about the comparison of the two. Um, your colleague, Adam, suggested that's in here. I didn't see the comparison in the previous approval. So could you just talk about the types of trucks and the usage, as well as if you have a sense of the comparison to the previous approval?
Yes. So, um, for the record, Stark Hip with Creighton Manning, uh, traffic consultant for the project. Um, as Adam alluded to, there was a, a, there actually is not a explicit comparison of the two uses in our report that we prepared, but as you've asked, we will, um, work with Adam to provide a submission, uh, that has the comparison of the two projects. Um, but I can't speak to, um, having just done a little review. Uh, as far as like overall traffic, the previous use was generating 36 trips in the morning and 44 trips in the evening. This, uh, new proposed project is gonna be generating 20 total trips in the morning and 32 total trips in the evening. Um, as far as the types of larger vehicles that the sites will be seeing, uh, the previous, um, project was gonna be a mix of contractors, landscapers. So, uh, the types of vehicles that they were expecting were, you know, maybe dual-axle dump trucks, uh, landscape trailers, uh, things of that nature. Uh, this project is expecting, um, deliveries to be made by box trucks, so, uh, like a single-unit 30-foot box truck, um, but also expecting, um, uh, tractor trailers. I, I believe it's a, a 43-foot, that's what they have a turning movement, uh, diagram for. Um, the driveways that, um, Adam discussed, uh, will be designed, um, according to the New York State DOT standard, and they will be looking at, um, site distance for those types of vehicles. Um, and as I said, the plans that I believe were provided have that turning template for the types of vehicles circulating the site.
Okay. Um, thank you. Uh, one thing that Adam triggered, and I see a couple notes here and there. What is the retail usage that is envisioned? Cause I'm hearing some, some allusions to, and may think Adam said something effective, and maybe we'll have consumers like us come and buy lumber like you can do in peak scale. That sounds like a different, that sounds like a lot more than 36 AM and 40, I'm sorry, you said something in the twenties, I think, for this.
Yeah, so it's...
So can you just talk about the retail, cause I didn't hear anything about, you know, us going and picking up some nails or two-by-fours? So...
I think that the, our understanding of the, the type of retail is a hardware or paint store. So kind of a small, I believe the retail component is 5,500 square feet. Um, but yeah, so it's not a, you know, it's not Lowe's. It's a more of a smaller mom-and-pop hardware shop.
Is that included in this data?
Yes, sir, it is. In fact, the ITE use that was specifically used to, uh, study the trip generation of that component is a, uh, hardware-type use.
Okay. Okay. Um, Ron, do you, do you feel that the study and the data supports both retail and wholesale or professional?
And that's how he's presented it in his study. I think the comparison might be helpful to the board that you've described.
Absolutely.
Okay, last question. Um, in terms of the building, uh, staging, and I want to pick up on some Laura had suggested, why are you putting the larger building in the front and the smaller building in the back? Why is it not the reverse, so we can reduce the amount of large sale, large-size massing on Route 9?
Right. So, so that relates back to, uh, to the uses. So the applicant's current and, and immediate, uh, need is for the storage space, and so the building is sized and put in the location where it makes sense, and it's sized for, for that particular...
I'm not sure I caught the answer, though. You, you say, wh, why can't you switch them? Like, why can't they build the 12, the 10,500-square-foot building in the back?
Because the, the, the storage use wants to be the size as, as it's shown for the, the applicant's use, and the retail component of the potential phase-two building, uh, would want to be out on the street where people would see it. And the idea of the more utilitarian use being further back on the site and being, in fact, behind the larger of the two buildings seemed like, uh, the way to go. In addition to the fact, and I don't want to, I don't want to get back into the phasing in any, in any great detail, but the sequence in which the applicant is seeking to do this is that they want to put in the, the warehouse, the storage, uh, structure first, and maintain the existing building. The phase-two building, the larger of the two buildings, is more or less on the footprint of the existing building. And so for the sequence of the way that they're looking to do it, in addition to just the nature of the two uses, it made more sense to have them in this configuration.
Okay. All right. Go ahead, Ron.
If I could follow up on that issue, the, it's understood that you're placing the front building generally in the area where the original site plan was approved for?
Yes.
And, and that had need to be at that location because of the activities going on behind it, and the parking, and whatever other storage you were placing in the back?
Correct.
Is there an ability to push that, this building further back? You don't have as much demand in the rear for the space.
We, we, we'd have to study it, and I'll, I'll confer with the applicant on, on that possibility. Um, I know that the, the, the amount of space between the two buildings was for maneuverability and, 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 and so on. Um, but there, there might be that potential, but I'll review that with the applicant.
Thank you.
And we'll, we'll report back.
Okay. Uh, thoughts on a public hearing? Okay, I'll just say, I, I, I think a comparison, I think the comparison of the previous would be useful public information, and I think you're gonna, we're gonna get a bunch of these questions. I feel like I'm not fully informed yet, especially this is an amended site plan, so I would rather have the data in front of us, so we can then intelligently then have a public hearing. I don't know what others think.
I agree totally.
Somebody else go first.
Laura or Heidi, comments?
Um, I'd like the comparison, um, just because I just want to see what was approved first and what the changes are.
Yeah, good. Heidi, do you want to say something?
I, I don't have anything. I don't think it's ma, important, but...
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see the, I don't see it. I, I, my, I, I'm glad that we're asking for it. I think it's good. It's, it shows due diligence on our part, but I, I don't see them coming back with anything, you know, saying, "Oh my God, I had no it", you know, I'm, I'm just not seeing it. And as far as pushing the front building back, you're already 113 feet from the road. Ron, I think they need, I think they, if you're having trucks delivering lumber back there, I think you're gonna need that room to, for your sweeps. Um, I, I think they're ready for a public hearing. I don't think we're gonna have, I, I don't think there's gonna be anything earth-shattering coming through, and let's, let's keep moving.
So I guess my question is, I mean, why can't they just do the comparison? I mean, I'm, I'm, not to downplay it, but it's just like two drawings, or like a drawing and a chart.
Yeah.
Which we can review. We don't need to delay the public hearing. We're just...
So we do this. How about you put, provide us the data, we'll have you present first, and then we'll have the public hearing right immediately after, like, and the same night.
We'll schedule the public hearing.
Yeah, we'll schedule the public hearing.
You want to see the evidence first, and we'll, and we'll take it from there.
Say that again?
I, I just said, so I'm just, I want to make sure I understand. So we'll, we'll show you the drawings.
We're gonna, I'll restate it. We're gonna schedule the public hearing. I think that's what the sentiment of the group is. When we reconvene in February, you'll present first the data, and you'll send it to us, so we can read in our read-ahead packets.
Sure.
And then we, you'll present, you'll send it to us by whatever the date is that Cheryl sets. We will then have you present it, as you'll present your findings. Hopefully you'll give a more clear comparison of the two things, and then we'll let the public comment.
Great.
Yeah? Everyone okay with that? Everyone okay with that?
Sure.
Good? All right, motion to schedule a public hearing for the next board meeting? Yeah? Motion? Second?
Second.
Dennis, second, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstentions, okay.
Quick question, was lead agency declared?
Hold on, I can't hear you.
Was lead agency declared, I don't, I don't-
I thought we did that last time, no, Ron? Ron?
I'm sorry.
Did we declare lead, us as lead agency last time? I thought we did.
You can just formally acknowledge yourself to be lead agency, yes.
Yes, okay.
That would be fine. There's no other action you need to take tonight.
There's no other action to take, yeah.
Very good. Thank you.
All right, great. All right, thank you, sir. All right, stepping stones. What's that?
Who's saying that?
Oh, I'm not just stepping stone, I'm not just stepping stone, yeah. Is that, feels like a Lynyrd Skynyrd kind of, stepping stone, not just stepping stone. Yeah, you're right, not your stepping stone. Cheryl left. Cheryl left, what?
Cheryl left.
Cheryl left, she's took on. Not your stepping stone, yeah, who is that?
I'm just saying the monkeys.
Not your stepping, oh, that may be right, stepping stone, let's see, I'm just typing in the old Google machine. The monkeys!
Oh, it is.
The monkeys, well done, well done. God.
I'm assuming she'll have to post it on the-.
Yes. The signing, yeah. Thank you. Okay. Sir?
How are you? Brian Stokosa, Danes Stokosa Engineering, here tonight with the applicants for the stepping stones daycare. Applicants have an existing facility where they operate, they have existing stucco building here, parking lot as you come in. They have basically nine employees right now, up to 40 children. They go anywhere from a couple of weeks old to five years old.
Speak other drop. Can't really hear you.
No problem.
Thank you.
Again, they have nine employees, 40 kids onsite at any one time. Age group ranges from weeks to five years old, and they have quite an extensive waiting list right now, and since business is good, and they have a waiting list, they're looking to expand their building. So right now their building is just a hair over 3,000 square feet, and what they'd like to do is a new building off to the side, which would be roughly 1,800 square feet. We're still playing around with internal layout and bathroom positioning, office positioning, but basically the creation of three to four classrooms, small office space for administrative purposes. The building would be one-story, it would match the existing, the existing building onsite, it's a light tan stucco, low-pitched roof, and obviously the window configuration would, would obviously mimic the existing building onsite. Looking at total usage of the site, be adding roughly four employees, so you're up to like, you know, 13 employees right now, and then we probably, I think we're averaging a worst-case of 60 kids onsite, so it'd be an additional 20 kids that would be at a full build-out condition. Site supported by existing well and existing onsite septic. We've gone ahead and around a couple of numbers right now, they're using relatively little water, their septic system's approved for just a, just a hair under 800 gallons a day, but I think right now we're using anywhere from 110 to 100 gallons per day on their current use. So we obviously will be involved with the health department in looking at the septic system to see if we can tap into the reserve capacity that they have based upon current use. As far as additions to the play areas, right now we have two play areas, we have an existing fenced-in area behind the building and an area off to the side. What we'd like to do is shift this existing area here to behind the new building, and that way with the, they'd have two different play areas for obviously the different age group children. There is a 20-foot wooded buffer, we're next to a residential zone, so if you can see here, this shaded area here is that, is that buffer area. The, 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 the property itself is surrounded by wood line, so there is a small area here where it looks like that canopy line kind of comes into that 20-foot buffer area. We showed some evergreen plantings to be sensitive to the neighbors there to provide some additional screening visually and hopefully if there's any noise generation with the playground, that would be reduced with that screening. As far as other improvements on the site, I know we were initially thinking we may need four spaces, but looking at the drop-off times, the amount of employees, and how they're staggered, you know, we potentially showed an additional four parking spaces, but honestly, I think if you look at code requirements and you look at, you know, the applicant's drop-off times, I don't know if we necessarily need those parking spaces, but we did show them as just as a worst case. I'll open it up to the board, the applicant's here too, if you have any questions you'd like to ask the applicant.
Okay, Ron?
Yeah. As the board recognizes, this is a new application before the board, first time you're hearing the proposal from the applicant. There's a few administrative things that you want to do initially. One is to classify it as a major project pursuant to code. That just establishes the review procedures and essentially requires a public hearing on the project. Secondarily, you, most often you initially identify the type of seeker action that it represents. Statutorily, under the code, under the Part 617 regulations, it actually qualifies as a Type 2 action, which I've noted in my technical memorandum to you. However, as the applicant indicates, the south side and the west side of the property abuts residential development, and it's, it's always possible that that could elicit some greater public interest than it might otherwise. So I'm suggesting the board may want to wish, may wish to declare it as an unlisted action just to provide a little bit further environmental review to the project to just document for the public that a thorough evaluation has been conducted on the project. But that's a decision that you have to make. As I said, I'm suggesting that it be deemed an unlisted action just for that harder look. There's some referral-
Ron, can you remind the board what the difference is between the Type 2 and the unlisted action in terms of our analysis or the work?
Type 2 actions are specifically defined in Part 617, and they're identified in the regulations as projects which have been deemed to be minor and don't require any further environmental review. So upon their classification as Type 2, you've essentially completed your environmental review, and then you just process the site plan as it is. If it's an unlisted action, you then have the discretion to either have a coordinated environmental review with other agencies or an uncoordinated review. Coordinated review just involves notification to other agencies that might be involved. At this point, I'm not sure if there are any, to be, to be honest with you. And if it's an uncoordinated review, you just, you look at the environmental review in your, in your own interest, and each, each involved agency can make their own, own review. But you go through the process of reviewing the Part 1 EAF that's been filed by the applicant, you perform separately a Part 2 seeker review, you just elaborate and further understand potential impacts, and at that point, you would then be in a position to make a seeker declaration. So if it's a Type 2, there's no further action to take once it's classified. If it's unlisted, then you would go through an EAF review and then make a seeker determination.
Again, your argument for the unlist is because of an adjacent residential property?
Yeah, and I suspect that that might, again, there's going to be an expansion of a daycare center.
Yeah.
It's possible that the people in the rear along Norwood might have greater interest and might want to, want to know that you've taken a hard look at the project.
Anything else?
There's other matters to look at. The last significant item for you to talk about initially is whether you want to have a site inspection, which again, I would recommend just because of the proposed activity.
And you've recommended a couple of referrals, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Adam, anything to add?
I have nothing to add.
Okay. It's like a MASH episode, I have then, I'd like to add that I have nothing to add, I remember from, it's a good one. All right, sounds good. Board members, questions on the application?
Just a quick question, Ron, or does anybody, Ron, I read in your memo about the aquifer. Do we know where that is? Because it's not on the draw.
It's, it's, it's under that whole area. It, if they just identify soil types on the property, you'll be able to establish where the limits of that Clove Creek aquifer represent, is represented, because on your environmental resource mapping, it identifies it within that zone.
Okay.
And they, they can illustrate that as well.
Okay.
Neil?
You know, I'm thinking, I'm looking at this and I'm thinking about the Skanga application next door where they had, there was, we had some feedback because they were having night deliveries and they had lighting, a lot of nighttime lighting and things like that. I'm not seeing it here. I think that the, you know, the health department, you've got your septic, you're okay with that, you've got your 100% redundancy, I just, I'm tempted to offer that we just declare it a Type 2 action.
Okay, well, let's, let's take them in part. So let's start, let's start with the, we'll have to declare it a major project first. Let's go in that order. So I have a motion to declare this a major project. No one wants to move that?
I don't see.
It's required.
Oh, it's required?
If you read the memo, I'm not, I'm not, it's not major as in it's bad, it's just major as in as you read in the note, it says, well, let's just read it.
Since you put it that way.
Well, it says, per the provision, no, just, let's just read it out loud, Ron's words, per the provisions, I'm on page two, of Section 17560, there's two criteria, alteration of existing structures by 1,000 square feet or alteration of 10,000 square feet of land. So, I mean, do we have a choice, Ron?
No.
No? Okay. Can I have a motion to declare it a major project?
I'll be proud to make that move.
Okay. Obligation's a wonderful thing, a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, great. All right, the second thing we have to do, now we'll do the question of the Type 2 versus the unlisted action. So let's, let's, before we take a motion, let's just go back to Neil's point. Neil's argument was that, what was the, your argument for, sticking with the Type 2?
They seem to have their septic, we're not talking about any nighttime activity, we're talking about keeping the same hours, your, your, your operations aren't changing, you're just a couple more minivans going in and out every day.
How much closer are you getting to the residential line?
From a building standpoint, we're going to be 20 feet closer with the building, and then from the play area standpoint, we're going to be probably 30 feet closer to that, to our, to our property line. And knowing that, just to give you perspective, where the play area is going to be just from an elevation difference, we're about eight feet lower than the neighboring property line, and we're also going to be putting in a row of evergreen trees to fill in that void in the wooded buffer area, so if the board wants, we could always do a staggered pattern just to add redundancy.
Dennis, please. How close is the nearest neighbor?
83.
83 feet? To the nearest residential property?
I would say you're almost 200 feet. I could get you an exact number at the next meeting.
Well, the nearest property line is 83.
Okay. 200 feet.
They got the septic, we're going to learn a lot, I mean, the health department's going to handle that, county health, we, I mean, I'm assuming we're going to, there's a, there's a SWIP plan in our future here somewhere?
We'll put a SWIP together, I mean, we're not even taking down a single tree, it's all, it's all grassed right now, disturbed, so.
I don't have a strong view, but I do take, put extra weight on Ron's recommendation on things like this, so I'll, I'll take a vote for a, let's just take a vote for a Type 2, which is what you're suggesting, which is the lower standard, meaning, that's what Neil was suggesting, I guess, obviously you would move that.
I'll move that.
Is there a second for the Type 2? Okay, second. All right, discussion, so the folks want to do the lesser versus the slightly more, wouldn't call it intense, but slightly more, more information provided in a Type 2 action. We got a motion and a second on the table, so discussion. No? You don't want to do it? You want to do the more intense version?
No.
You don't? That's, well, that's what, we're doing the less intensive, you just moved.
Yes.
All right, well, I'll just call the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay, fine, you got, you got it, fine. So, so Ron, you've been overruled, that's the first time it's ever happened. Sorry, buddy. Okay. All right, great, so that's, that's that, and then when it comes to referrals, let's do it first, I'll, I know, I know Steve Gab at least likes these referrals to be separate votes, so can I have a motion to refer this project to the conservation board, please? Motion?
I'll second.
Second, all in favor, aye. Okay, county department of health, a motion to refer to them as well. Motion, second. I know it's very perfunctory we're doing this, but we got to do it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and finally, referral to the fire department, which I do think is quite meaningful. I will tell you that the last time we approved a school in town, which is doing quite well, my daughter attended it, man it too, there was material changes made during that work, I don't think any of you were on the board at the time, but we did approve it, and there was a change where we added, add a sprinkler system to the old plum bush, and two of our predecessors on the board were very thoughtful about taking care of the kids, and so I think it's a very important referral to the fire department, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And actually, I don't know if I moved it. Motion?
I'll second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I think we now have to finally schedule a site, a site visit, which is important. Cheryl, could you get the calendar out, given all the note, this is a major project, so I think it requires a certain amount of notification period?
Yeah, it could be the 5th of February or the 12th.
The 5th or the 12th of February?
I'll go with either one.
The 5th or the 12th.
Prefer the 12th.
What's that?
Prefer the 12th.
Prefer the 12th. Heidi?
I'm fine with either.
Fine?
Thank you.
Either one, so I'll take the 12th as well. Are you okay with the 12th? You?
Yes, sir.
Great. Are you, are you guys both the applicants?
Yes.
You're sitting so far away from each other.
We're together all day long.
Oh, all right, all right. You're a work wife, okay, got it, understand. 9:00 AM, 9:00 AM, yeah. 9:00 AM on the 12th of February with the appropriate notifications. Thank you for doing this, it's great to see a school growing, it's nice to approve that instead of some of the other things we approve, it's, it's good luck and congratulations on your growing business and service in the community. Okay, anything else in that, Ron?
No, that covers it.
Okay, last item of business, Kozlowski and Effie for, I guess it's Mulligan's Run?
No.
Okay. It's your dog's name, okay.
Tell me, I'll take offense on the minivan comment.
What?
Tell me, I'll take offense on the minivan comment.
Who made the minivan comment?
Who made the minivan comment?
Who? Who said that? Oh. Well, we're not done yet, hold on. Where are you going? We're at done.
I didn't like my minivan comment.
All right, well, they, they do deserve a fair amount of-
Do you do 9:00? 9:30?
She said 9 o'clock. Are we, is it normally 9:30?
Same angle?
What time do we normally do same? I thought it was 9:30, too, I think he's right. Normally 9:30, yeah.
A little warm.
A little bit, okay.
Remember not to block.
All right, so I guess we'd like to hear from the Kozlowskis of West 19th Street. Go ahead.
Hi, and Happy New Year. So, I'm Linda and this is my husband, Mike. We bought the property at 168 South Mountain Pass in May of 2019, and we've fallen in love with the area and want to make it our permanent home. So, we want to completely relocate up here to Garrison. And in particular, we fell in love with this particular property and house that was built in 1968. It's a, it's a architecturally interesting house to us, and, and as part of that, we really fell in love with the land. So, we have 11 acres, and we're, we love being surrounded by the trees and the brook that runs by the house. Family's also incredibly important to us, and it's a mid-century house, which means it's rather small from a bedroom perspective, and we really wanted a place where our families could come stay with us. We don't have our own children, but we have nieces and nephews that mean quite a bit to us and come to spend quite a bit of time. And so, we wanted a place where everyone could be comfortable and also where I could work remotely without disturbing anyone who's coming to stay with us. And, but as part of this property, we really fell in love not only with the area but with the land, and so, we worked carefully with an architect to look at a house expansion that would allow for additional bedrooms, as well as a study for me, to be able to work from home and have as little disturbance on the land as possible. And so, we are trying to use the existing parking areas as much as possible for the site of the house, or of the additions to the house. And, and there's really two additions to the house, one is a garage gym area, and then the other is, is study and, and bedroom extensions, along with some renovations on the existing property. And so, that's the very short summary of the, of the project, but we have, of course, our team here from our architect, so Massey from, from our architect, architecture firm, and then you, I think, are all very familiar with Jason from Beatty Watson, who can talk a little bit more about the site plan. Happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Who would like to go first, Jason or the architect?
I'll, I think I'll start, I guess.
Okay.
Let's see what the best sheet to start off with is. So, what we have here is, as Linda said, this is a three-bedroom, single-family home, two-story, it's got an existing septic system, and well, we have, well, this is on, it's a 10-acre parcel on, on South Mountain Pass, it's probably, it's probably a quarter acre, a quarter mile east of South, South Mountain Pass Spur, on the north side of the road, kind of goes, kind of goes, kind of goes down, down from the, down from the road. There's an existing gravel driveway, existing gravel driveway with an existing stream crossing. The driveway is going to remain most of the alignment, we're, we're keeping most of the alignment except at the end, where we're going to, where we have a proposed driveway, or a proposed garage and parking court. There's currently no garage, there's just a couple parking areas near the house. So, we do intend, so, as far as, we, so we do intend to replace the, we have a, an addition with an increase in bedroom count, which requires a new septic system. And we're, we're also proposing a new drilled well based on the location, its, its current location doesn't exactly work, but, so, we, we've proposed a, a new septic and new, a new well. We do have a correspondence from the health department approving, approving with, conditioned upon a conservation board approval, the approval of the, of the septic system. The health department's holding off on the, on the, on the septic and well approval until we get the, because of, because of, because of the, the house and the septic tank are in the, in the buffer, so they're not going to approve, they're not going to approve this, the, the project as a whole until, until we get that sorted out with the, with the conservation board. So, that, so that leads me to the, to some of the environmental stuff. We have a, this is the rural conservation on a town road, so we have a 250-foot scenic protection overlay along the, along the road line. We don't have any proposed development actually in the, in the scenic protection overlay, it's, it's, the scenic protection overlay is along the front here, it generally ends right about at the stream, so we're not, we don't have any proposed development in, in the actual scenic protection overlay. We have a town-regulated water course that runs through the middle of the property with some associated wetlands that are associated with that. Those have been flagged by Steve Marino, and we have a, and we filed an application with the, with the conservation board and a wetland determination with, with Mac so that he can, so that he can verify the, the wetlands.
Sir, you've already gone before the conservation board?
No, we, not yet.
We're going to make the referral, Ron.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. But we have, we have, we have filed the application with the, we have filed an application. And, yeah, so, I mean, and, so in the green, we have the, we have the wetlands is, is in green, the, we have steep slopes on, or steep terrain on the property. And part of our development is on the steep terrain, the 20% steep terrain areas, we don't have any on the, on the higher, on the higher slopes. We, we do have part of the, the guest wing addition is on the, is on some 20% slopes, which the, the, your, the planning board would have to approve that, approve that work. The, the reason, so, the other reason why we're here, so basically, what you are looking at is an addition that's greater than 1,000 square feet, that brings everything over a 3,000 square foot footprint is, is why we're here, and, and the, the land disturbance on the 20% slopes.
Okay. Anything else? All right, ma'am, would you like to say anything?
Just to, just to show...
Just wait before you get the mic, please.
Maybe just to show what Linda was talking about, this is the existing...
Yeah, just, your name, please?
My name is Massey, I'm from Olson Kundig Architecture. Just to show the existing footprint and in relation to the guest volume and the gym and garage. So, the intent is to not overstate it and really fit in with the mid-century modern aesthetic of the home. Just, I can show these. And maybe some elevations would be helpful, too.
If you want to stay with the microphone, I can do this.
Sorry, we can show you some elevations, too. So, this would be looking at the guest volume, having a light footprint, not touching down too much on the ground. And we can show you the gym volume. So, this is the existing home, and also keeping low footprint here, this is for the garage. Just wanted to walk you through the, the drawings that we had done.
Again, the desire would be for neutral colors, disappear as much as possible.
Okay. All right, Ron?
Okay, this, again, this is the, first time the applicants appear before you, as has just been described, they require site plan approval from you, given the size of the additions, and based on what was just described, that they're now clearly impacting slopes greater than 20%, and also mandates a special permit from this board as well. At your first meeting, typically, you just do some statutory determinations. First would be to declare it as a minor project, again, based on the prior protocols of the Relative to SECRE, again, the Part 617 regulations identify this type of residential development activity as a type two action. Once so classified, it concludes your environmental review, so declaring it a type two action tonight would be an appropriate action for this board. There's various referrals that are necessary, they've talked about the conservation board already. Apparently, they've got the Department of Health review in hand and apparently moving towards an approval, but for this board's formality, you should still make referral to Putnam County, just to move that along.
To Putnam County?
Department of Health.
Yeah, good. Okay. Adam, anything to add?
Nothing to add.
Okay. Board members, questions?
Jason, what's your theory on going to the conservation board with this kind of construction in the wetlands and so close to the stream, Class C stream, too? How are you going to approach this? You know, the first, the first thing, I feel like the first thing they're going to tell you is where else can you put it?
Right. I mean, so, if you look at this, if you look at this sheet 2 of 4, I kind of have the, a bigger existing conditions area shown. And basically, we're proposing the addition that'll, over, we're proposing, we're proposing the additions over the existing parking impervious areas that are already generally So, so the additions are located in order to, to utilize those areas, as well as to, to keep some of the flow from the existing entries of the existing, to work with the existing residents. There's an entry, there's an entry here, and there's an entry here, so we're kind of using that and, and utilizing the, I mean, you know, the, the existing house is, is on the stream, so.
Yeah, I get that. Yeah, no, I think I didn't, I didn't realize that the proposed guest addition was on, that's going on, that's already disturbed and paved.
So, all of this is already, you know...
It's already developed.
This, this red is, so, so if, if you look on this, if you look on this existing conditions, the red is, are the actual proposed foundations on, on the ground. So, you can see this area here is where the, where the, where the addition is going, the guest wing addition is already a gravel driveway with retaining walls. So, that's, that's, that's...
Yeah.
Same, yeah, same, same thing with the garage, you know, the, the proposed garage is, is, is in this area here where there's a, where there's an existing parking area, and it kind of works with the, with the existing alignment of the, of the driveway. I mean, I think, I think when, when, assuming that we're going to have a site visit, when we go, you'll, you'll be able to see it all a little bit better.
Okay. Other than board members' questions? Heidi, anything?
So, are you saying the entire new addition is on, is over existing, the existing disturbed area already?
Not, not the entire.
So, well, I guess we'll see it when we go out there, but whatever.
Yeah.
I, I'm actually more confused after.
So, so, so we have, so we have this, so we have this, this, this structure here. Yeah, so, so the intent is to have the, this second floor here reach out over this existing, over this existing terrain, and then, and then meet, and then meet the, meet the existing terrain over in the corner.
I think I shared the confusion, I think will be important when we do the site, but please stake it all, because I think, I think this conversation, look, the basic question this group keeps wanting to get to is this point on the far, I don't know, what is left of your left point, which, of this, no, south, go, go down, yeah, right there, how far that is from the wetlands in this creek? I think that's basically where everyone's concerned about.
Right.
So, you know, whatever it is, just stake it out, we got, we got to see it, because I don't...
Yeah, this, this, I mean, we're, we're going to stake it, but there's a retaining wall, that's, that's the corner of the retaining wall, so.
Okay.
That's the driveway.
Yeah, that is.
Just identify it.
Yeah, I just, we got to see it, because I think everyone, I think Heidi said for, spoke for all of us, which is, I think we're a little more confused now than when we saw the picture. So, obviously, there's multiple levels going on.
Okay.
Okay.
Good job.
Yeah, well, no, it's a good question.
I know.
All right, others? Laura, nothing, Dennis, nothing? Okay. I don't have any specific questions, other than you've got some steep slopes, you've got some proximity, some wetland, you've got a septic system that is already, needs to be improved, that's already in the buffer, you're saying? Okay. Yes? Did I hear it correctly? You did say that.
The, the existing septic system location is, is kind of, kind of an unknown, and we're, I mean, it's, it's, it's a 50-year-old...
Okay, it's kind of unknown, okay, but then you said needs to be expanded.
It needs, well, it needs to be expanded because...
It needs to be expanded?
We, we, it's an increase in bedroom count.
Yes, I'm not disputing, I'm just saying you said that, and I thought I heard you say it's in the buffer. No?
The, I'm, I'm sorry, the septic, so, the septic tank is in the buffer, the sewers, so the sewers are in the buffer.
Okay.
But the, the septic system itself, the leaching fields are outs, are all outside of the, are all outside of the buffer.
Okay.
The proposed, the proposed is all outside.
But the septic tank is in the buffer?
Septic tank is in the buffer.
And does it need to be expanded?
The proposed, so, okay, well, we can get into, we can, we're going to keep the existing...
Yeah, he had the mic.
So, we're, we're keeping the existing septic tank that serves, it's, it's, it's right about, where is it? It's off the corner of this, of the existing swimming pool here. So, we're keeping the existing 1,000-gallon septic tank that serves the existing three-bedroom residents. We're going to have a new septic tank that's going to provide service for the guest wing addition, and there's also a half bath, I believe, half bath, or full bath in the, in the, in the garage addition wing. So, so that, that new septic tank will go to a new pump tank.
Okay.
The existing septic tank will be rerouted to the new pump tank, and then the new pump tank, which is also, which is outside of the buffer, will, will pump up to the leaching fields, which are, which are also all outside of the buffer. So, so basically, the, the septic tank, the existing septic tank that serves the existing residents will stay, will, will stay.
Okay. All right, great. No more questions from the board, I take it? Hearing none. Motion to declare this a minor project?
Minor project.
Thank you, second? Second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed abstentions. Second, we need a motion to refer to the conservation, oh, sorry, let's do the, the type two action for SECRE. Can I have a motion of that effect, please?
I'll make that one.
Thank you. I love that everyone's really thinking through who wants to make these motions.
It's just us.
It's just you two. You two just keep doing it. All right, all, second from Neil, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed abstentions, motion passes. Number three, referral to the conservation board, given the steep slopes and maybe the proximity to water, may I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, sir, second.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed abstentions. Next, a referral, as Ron suggested, to county health, which sounds like it's already in progress, but let's do it formally, may I have a motion, please?
I have a motion.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Dennis. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed abstentions, motion passes. Then finally, a referral to the fire department. A referral to the fire department.
I'll make that one.
Thank you, Dennis. Second.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed abstentions. This job is pretty fun, isn't it? They pay us $535 a quarter, we're doing pretty well. Yes, sir?
Are we doing a site?
Yes, that's number six, I'm getting there, don't you worry. There you go, look, number six. Okay, Cheryl, want to do the same, same morning, folks?
I would say the same morning.
Same morning.
Same morning. What time?
10:00.
10:30. We're doing 9, yeah, 9:30 and 10:30. I don't think, what?
I thought they were doing half.
I, hold on.
So, 9:30?
Stop. What have we historically done?
9:30.
9:30. 9:30.
Is it an hour or a half?
I think, where's the first one?
Uh, this is...
Where's, where's, no, no, we're not going to, stepping stone. Where's that?
There's no problem.
We need, I, I think we need an hour between the two. Is everyone okay with that?
Yeah, yeah.
People think a half, a half hour's too tight to get all the way down to South Mountain Pass, I think. Yeah, anyone?
Definitely.
9:30 and 10:30. 10:30 on whatever date?
2:12.
2:12? 2:12? You guys all said, architect, you're coming? Okay.
Stake it out and give us plenty of places to park.
Stake it out.
We come in, we come in like five cars.
Yeah. Now, I will tell you, I will tell you, as you're such lovers of Garrison now, one of our fellow planning board members, when she was on the board, cooked us lamb, I remember. We got lamb, uh, you remember, you were on the board then? Donuts are fine? No, I'm kidding, I'm just joking. We will, I think if you're second, we have already been fully caffeinated by then. So, we're just literally just joking about that, I'm just joking. Um, all right, uh, motion to adjourn, no, sorry, any new business? None? Motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Jesus. All right, thank you, guys. Good night. Thank you very much.